Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 4th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the exits around the room in case of emergency. And now join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Dollar General. Make a motion over the public hearing.
Yes, I'll move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The applicants have been working with the board. There have been multiple iterations. I want to congratulate the applicants for, I guess I congratulate, but for coming up with a project that I think most people on the board seem very proud of. It's unique architecture, and we've been working out basically since technical details. Before I go on for the public hearing portion of it, am I right that we've received an email from you that says that County Department of Public Works gave conceptual approval as well? I seem to recall that? For the entrance off Dorsey?
Of Dorsey, yes.
That's what I thought.
They said they didn't have any issues.
And today, if anyone had a chance to see their email, we also got a reiteration that you have conceptual approval for the one-way in off Route 9G from DOT.
Correct.
Those were two of the things we were waiting on for to conclude. Seeker?
I know we got the one.
We can't hear you? We can't hear you?
I know we got the email about DOT. When did the Dutchess County DPW?
A while back.
Prior to the last meeting.
Oh, all right.
I thought it was more of a conversation between, I don't think it was anything from DPW, right?
In August, there was one from DC DPW that said he doesn't foresee any problems, but he hasn't reviewed it yet.
Okay, because I did an inbox search for Dollar General, didn't, okay. So it's the old one.
That's the email.
So we're still, go ahead.
Pete emailed and said that he still wanted something more formal from DC DPW.
Not a problem.
He said that to me before I left the office, too.
Ms. Maginowski, let me turn it over to you then, for your presentation. We may have people here tonight to speak.
For the record, I'm Karen Maginowski from Bowler Engineering, and I'm here with Ken Fioretti from HSC Hyde Park LLC this evening. HSC Hyde Park LLC is the contract purchaser and developer for the proposed redevelopment project located at 1 East Dorsey Lane here in the town. The existing lot is outlined on the aerial exhibit that you can see over here, and I'll run through a brief history of the project for the information of the public so that they understand where we began and where we are today. The parcel is just under 2 acres, and it's located in the neighborhood business district of the town. We are proposing to demolish the existing structure and redevelop the site with a 7,500 plus or minus square foot Dollar General retail store. The proposed plan is shown on this site plan, as you can see here, and we're generally keeping the proposed building in the same location that the existing building is. The layout meets all of the required yard setbacks, as well as the minimum parking count for the size of the retail store. 27 parking spaces are proposed. When we initially began the process, we had a lot more pavement on the site and a bit of a different access configuration as well. And through working hardly with the planning board and their consultants, we have significantly reduced the amount of impervious area by both shrinking the size of the parking stalls themselves and the drive aisles. And since the last meeting, when we received comments regarding looking at further reducing impervious area, we made a couple of changes to the plan, and those are reflected on the plans you received this evening. We were able to narrow the pavement area for the truck turnaround. We had to keep the length to give it the room for the throat to pull forward and back in properly, but we were able to make that area more narrow. We also took 2 parking spots, as suggested, and rotated them in this area and created a new landscape island for more green space and to further break up the parking lot area. When we began, we had 1 large wide sidewalk out front of the store, and in working with the board and their consultants, we created an area with foundation plantings out front of the store. Also, when we began, we didn't have much landscaping at all. We do have a large amount of green space area, but we've come to a very detailed and refined landscape plan here with street trees all along the frontages and other shrubs that are there to break it up. We also added shrubs along both entrances to the site and around the proposed monument sign. Our full access for the project is proposed off of East Dorsey Lane, and that is in review with the Dutchess County Department of Public Works for their approval. We also have a right-in-only access off of Violet Avenue, which is the state DOT road, and they are reviewing that as well and have granted conceptual approval for the location of that access. As part of the site plan review process, we prepared a couple of traffic impact assessments that were reviewed by the Town Planning Board, their consultants, and DPW and DOT have those studies as well. It's anticipated that this will have minimal or no impact on the existing traffic patterns that are there. Throughout the process, we also added about 900 linear feet of sidewalks around the frontage, which is a lot for this lot, as you can see the way it's situated, as well as connections from the store to get there. We also added amenities such as benches, and we added a bike rack, which was an addition since the last meeting, as the board requested. In addition to those site items, we've come a long way with the proposed architecture for the building as well. And here's a side-by-side comparison of that building architecture. So this image here on the left is where we began. This is definitely a lot more dressed up than Dollar General retail stores you're used to seeing, but through the help of the board and their consultants and the feedback that we received, we came a long way, working from this base, which had false shutters, since there are no windows due to merchandising, and these barn doors that are here and this sort of recessed vestibule. And where we ended up is this architecture here, which adds a lot of windows and fenestration. The faux windows up here that you can see, we also increased the size of the dormers so that we could add faux windows up there and add windows to the barn doors. This also shows the foundation plantings that are proposed to break up the sidewalk and parking lot area and the new vestibule design, which incorporates the barn doors and the columns that are there. For the signage, to soften things up, we have gooseneck lighting proposed with channel letters as opposed to your typical internally illuminated box sign. We also prepared and submitted all 4 sides of the building elevation, since all 4 sides will be prominent from the intersection, and that includes colors and materials as well, all with horizontal hardy board siding. So we're very excited to continue the process here tonight and hear from the public with any feedback. Thank you.
Before opening up to the public, thank you for going through that fairly quickly and smoothly. For those in the audience who can't see it, that really is, when you showed the side-by-side of the original building versus now, it's dramatically different. And even what was proposed initially was still an upgrade from what we normally see from Dollar Generals. So as I've said every time, thank you for investing in our, considering investing in our community. Ms. Axelson, any additional comments?
Just briefly, I went over my August 16th comment, so I won't belabor that. It's nice to see more responsiveness. I know that we have a couple of plans to look at, which, if the board wants, I could look at and issue a new updated memo unless you are going to submit other materials.
You mean make comments based on what we just received tonight?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. And that's it.
Mr. Lern, any comments? Subbing tonight for Mr. Sotero.
So I have, we have an August 16th review memorandum. I'm not going to go through everything, but there were a couple of items that I wanted to highlight. One of the issues that we were trying to work through had to do with the fill material for this infiltration basin. And you were working with the DEC. Do you have any updates on those conversations?
We've discussed it further with them, and we're still waiting on their additional feedback.
Okay, great. And then I think we have a few other things, maybe an offline meeting, just set up an offline meeting with us to kind of review the stormwater and make sure we're all on the same page.
Certainly.
Would be a good idea, too. You mentioned the turnaround length for the truck. We had talked about possibly trying to reduce that length, which I see in the tourney plan that you need that full length to get in and out of the loading area. So that's acceptable. I do see in this plan that you just submitted that there's a guide rail proposed at the end of the turnaround. What kind of guide rail are you proposing there?
That would be wooden.
It would be a wooden one? Okay, good. So that'll fit well with the site. And then one of the other comments we had had to do with the right-in access off of Violet Avenue, and we thought that maybe turning, making that a little sharper of a turn. Have you looked at that, or are you waiting for feedback from DOT?
Yes, we're happy to do that, and we're waiting on direction from DOT.
Okay, so that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Polidoro, any comments?
Just legal comments. We're just waiting to close out Seeker, waiting to get more formal comments from DC DPW. We did get a reconfirmation that DOT had issued conceptual approval, but they still have comments. I don't know when those comments will be forthcoming, but apparently they don't rise to the level of Seeker comments. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Weiser, comments?
Nothing to add. Just want to say thank you again for your responsiveness to all the board's concerns. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Pickett?
I like very much what you've done. My only concern now is the 2 dumpsters that are sitting. I know you've got Avrovites, the emerald green Avrovites, item that are planted around it. My concern, it's only 20 feet from the sidewalk, that you've got such a beautiful building and done all this now, you don't want to see those dumpsters.
And they are in an enclosure, a fence enclosure.
Oh, there is? Oh, okay, I didn't see that. Oh, okay, fine. And that'll keep the dumpsters from traveling around, so.
Absolutely.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wasser?
I echo Ms. Weiser's comments. I'm delighted with where the project is now, and thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Just echoing Ms. Wasser and Ms. Weiser's comments.
Chris?
Thank you very much. I think you guys have done an awesome job. Quick question, did you look into the fence detail for the?
We did, and I apologize, I didn't point that out. On your new site plan, it calls out a post and rail fence for stormwater.
Yep.
Thank you.
I gave it a quick gander just now.
I didn't see it. Thank you.
Just congratulations on a beautiful-looking building. I wish you much success, and it's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I open it up for public comment, I see that the sidewalk took a box there, and I opened up my plan, there's a guy wire. I think, in general, we prefer to see sort of a half moon.
Sure.
As opposed to the box. It's easier in the half moon for anyone with ADA issues to get by. These are harder. And I wouldn't know that if I hadn't read more of the design manual these days that DOT puts out, but they prefer the curve. Not that that's a DOT crosswalk or sidewalk in through there, but just in case. Otherwise, there's still some comments, I think that you're going to hear from DOT, as I said, that these sidewalks need to connect to Route 9, I mean 9G, I'm sorry, and Dorsey. Otherwise, thank you for all the additions. I'll take more time when I go through this with more detail. So let me open this up to the public. Would anyone like to speak about this application? Just come on up, and do you guys mind opening up the microphone? Just please state your name and address for the record. And make sure you're speaking to the microphone, too, because we're recorded.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Brian Pruner. This is my wife, Wanda Pruner. I thought you were going to take over. We resided 13 East Dorsey Lane, the property next door to the proposed Dollar General that's up. We've lived there since 1993, so a long time. Just had our 31st anniversary yesterday, so we've been there for 26.
Congratulations.
We do have a few concerns we just wanted to ask, and maybe you can answer for us.
Sure.
Okay.
Just on the grading and drainage part of it, I just want to better understand, I don't, who do I dress on that?
You have questions to us, but I'll ask probably one of the consultants to answer. It's technical?
Yeah, just so I better understand it. I see that there's a retention area, so there's 2, there's a small berm after the parking lot, and then there was like a spill over, and then a larger berm. That is the first line of defense for the water.
Andy, do you want to address this?
So in general, the water is going to flow a couple of different ways into that basin. There's actually a long, narrow basin, I'm coming closer to the parking lot, that's where I'll enter. There's actually also an underground infiltration system closer to Dorsey Lane that will flow into there first, after it goes into the long, narrow one. After that, then it will flow over into the larger one. The idea is actually that all the water will actually infiltrate into the ground without ever having to overflow across that berm. So we have a few details that we've got to work out with the applicant to make sure that it's all good, but that's the idea, is that there would never actually be any flow across that line.
Okay. And by the way, it's a requirement from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation that post-development flow be, sheet flow be the same as pre-development. So it's got to stay, basically, the water's supposed to stay in the ground on the land. If you were watching these meetings, which I think you probably have, you'll know that Mr. Sotero, our engineer, that was his first concern, was that no water flow over into your property. I think it flows there now, probably.
So I will clarify that the design storm is a 100-year storm.
Yep.
So I think, as you were getting at, you know, if we have a larger event, which happens, then that's why the spillway is there. So because if it weren't, there could be problems.
Now, the spreader spillway that you were just, the black pocket near our property, is that the second? If there's over?
So that's, that's, right. So if the larger area fills up, that's where the water will come out. And that's where we really need to narrow, focus in on, and make sure that we're comfortable with that design.
And from my research, I'm in commercial plumbing sales, so I'm at a lot of these job sites. I'm doing, I'm inside the buildings. I look around and excavate once in a while. But the, and then the third one is, I see there's 6 18-inch pipes.
That's the underground system I mentioned. So actually, the way that it's set up, the water is actually supposed to go to those 18-inch pipes before it ever enters the larger, larger.
Okay, so that is, okay.
And the pipes have holes in them, right?
They do. They're perforated.
They're perforated pipes, so the water flows out into the ground.
Right, and then through, okay. Yeah, because I kind of understand. I'm looking at the numbers, 292, 290. So over the privacy fence, there's going to be like a mound, a small mound?
Yes.
Small mound.
Yep.
To the privacy fence, have we figured out what kind of privacy fence? I looked at the other Dollar General, and it kind of looks like that wood privacy fence in the plans. Do we know if that's what it is?
The new plans don't have any details of fences or lights or?
It just is fencing. It doesn't explain if it's vinyl or if it's wood.
I think Karen can answer that.
Yeah, if you'd like to know.
That's what I thought. It's been labeled wood in the past.
So it'd be solid?
Like a stockade?
No gaps in it, like?
Yes, it would either be?
Could you please use the microphone?
Can you use the walk-around? Thank you, Karen.
It would be a solid wood fence without gaps.
Okay.
Now, when they saw that, my concern is, what area is it facing? Because there's going to be posts in the ground, and I want to be able to see the nice side of the fence. I don't want to see the other side of the fence.
The nice side would face out towards your property.
Okay, good. Because we've seen fences that are not like that, and you were just like, oh, we want to look at the nice side.
All right. Well, the other one, the nice side's facing Dollar General, so it's kind of, maybe he had a preference. Okay, so we have that answered. Who determines what trees are taken down up to by our property? I see it's like says all tree removal. There's a pretty good amount of trees in there.
That's why we requested that they put trees back in. They have to keep trees out of the stormwater detention area, otherwise it won't function like it's supposed to.
Okay.
So the trees are going to go on their side of the fencing? Is that true?
If you?
We tried online. We can't read this.
Do you mean this fence, when you say the fence?
Yes, yes, the privacy fence.
So the trees have been placed around and through here to facilitate, because to make up for the fact that there's trees there now? None of them, at least in my opinion, look that particularly healthy and great. When I've walked the site many a time, it's not as though we're losing high qual-
Well, that's why I was, I was going to say, who's going to go in and mark? Because I kind of see where our property line is, and it looks like there's some trees, like, right there. So how far?
So they can't take down legally any trees that are on your property line or that straddle your property line. So, I mean, we can talk about having it surveyed as a?
The answer would be that Ms. Moss, our zoning administrator, will not give them a CO if they don't follow what's on the plans.
And Michael, I did have a lingering comment. An earlier plan had trees all along, or some kind of tall shrub, all along the northern property line. And so I kept repeating the comment, hoping that it would be put back, and I thought the last response memo had said that it was put back, but it wasn't there, so I just repeated the comment, because there used to be a nice landscape buffer around.
Do you mean by northern, do you mean this?
Property line. Right.
And you're saying they're not showing it?
No, I just see fence along here.
The landscape's the next sheet. Is it on that one?
Go ahead.
No.
Yeah, it's not there.
So I just want to put that back in front of the board, because I guess the last response memo indicated that the trees were put back. Sometimes, you know, between the person writing the response letter and who's doing the plans, you can miss a detail. So I figured that's what it was, and I just repeated the comment, hoping that those trees would be put back along the northern line. So that was the idea, or some kind of planting. And so all I see now is a stuffy.
The pruners don't live there, they live here, if I'm correct?
Correct.
Because this would be a separate house and entrance? So are you suggesting they add trees in through here or in through here?
I meant the, we had a landscaping plan previously that had shown plantings all along the northern line, and I was just asking for them to be put back.
I think that was before they put the fence in.
It was.
And we had talked about that the fence would be?
So you guys prefer the fence?
It provides better year-round screening.
Okay, as long as the board is satisfied. So I won't repeat that comment.
Please continue.
So I'm going, I'm on the website, I'm going off of the plans that are 7/26/19, revision 4.
Yeah, she just brought new plans tonight, so those are, those were the most recent, I believe.
7/26, and then tonight.
And then, okay, so tonight's, okay.
What is your question?
I saw on the plans, for 26 years now, we've been pulling out of our driveway mostly to the right, because to pull, we do pull out to the left, but there's a mound there. And then I saw they want to put a 4-inch diameter mulch tree or something?
Right in the corner.
Right on the corner, 2 of them, where the sidewalk is.
That first corner?
Yeah.
So now that we can hopefully see cars coming the other direction for the first time.
When we make a left.
When we make a left, I don't know if that's, would consider putting a bush or a tree there.
Put them behind the sidewalk? Would that?
It seems to be right near the sun, probably between the?
It might not be on the plane.
Well, this plan, it does show it, right there, yeah. That would be tough to pull out of the driveway. That's going to eventually, we're going to not be able to see when we, you know, on the western side.
You mean for the site distance analysis?
Yeah.
If the tree's properly limbed up, would that still include your view?
Yeah, because sometimes if the town doesn't get to the weeds growing, I got to go out there and mow them down, because, but now that it looks like that mound could possibly be taken away now, it'd be nice not to have anything.
Can you sort of go up and just point to what you're talking about exactly? I'm sorry, I'm missing something.
And I think that'd be a right, a right turn out of the driveway.
Pulling out of our driveway, which is going to be right about here, so our vision sees the cars coming this way.
So we've got to make a left out of the driveway?
Out of the driveway.
There's a mound there?
Well, right now, there's?
Right now, there's a?
What kind of trees are proposed right now?
I just saw a 4-inch round tree. I don't know what that is.
4-inch means, it's 4 inches diameter, breast height?
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
That's what the 4-inch means, it's not a 4-inch tree, it's a?
Well, right, right, but yeah.
It'd be more a safety.
Do you know what's proposed there?
2-inch caliber plane trees.
London plane trees, so sycamore in common parlance. 2-inch DBH?
Yes. Plane tree. We can remove them if it's a concern.
I don't think there's going to be an issue.
Why can't you move them on the other side of the side?
We'll have the underground storm piping there.
Yeah.
Pardon?
We would have underground storm piping in this area.
So I guess, I guess we'll just leave it as this, but if it becomes a problem, which is going to have to be addressed for us to pull out of our driveway. Because even now, it's, there's a bit of a vision issue, because it's, because the property line goes up.
We can put a requirement on the plan that the applicant has to keep them limbed throughout their life, so that you always have sight. Because when they first go in, I don't think it's going to be an issue. And then as they grow, it should get taller.
Should get better.
But we can put something on there that makes them responsible to keep it trimmed.
That's all we're, yeah, that's what we're looking for.
These are also the number-one removals of pollution for urban trees.
Oh, lovely.
And they're long-lived. These are the same ones in front of the drive-in on Route 9?
Okay, yeah.
Really big diameter?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, right? Something about?
Well, if you ever go back to the site, if you wanted to take a look.
I wasn't remembering that there was a mound there.
There is one, it's?
I believe you, no, no, I believe you. It's coming back into my head now, because it's been a while since I walked the side.
It's deceiving, because it's a little bit of a hill, too.
Well, and it's also scruffy over there, so I didn't really get into the weeds, quote-unquote. Sorry.
All 3 of our kids have grown up and moved out, and they all pull out to the right, so. I think they learned on their own. I'm not taking, I'm not trying that left. And the last thing I have is, have we determined any hours yet, or delivery hours or store hours?
Generally speaking, they'll be open early in the morning to, I think, 9 o'clock or 10, I believe it was.
I believe the EAF had 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
8:00 AM to 10:00.
Similar to the other store in town.
Basically, they all operate at the same hours as was explained to us last time, because they all receive some of the same deliveries at the same time.
We did ask them to identify delivery hours at the last meeting, and I don't know, I haven't looked at the new submission to know if that's done.
Yeah, I had a, I had a comment about that. Provide planned notation to specify the proposed hours of operation and specify restriction on hours for truck deliveries, discuss with the planning board, and, yeah, it was kind of left open.
So we need to clarify that still?
Yes, I've mentioned it a couple of times. And I'd like to, I appreciate, I've watched, watched every video.
We've watched every video, and we really appreciate how you've taken us so much into your concern of everything.
The neighborhood.
The neighborhood and everything.
It's really good to see.
Yeah, we'd have a question, we would watch the video, and we'd have a question, we'd write it down, and then, oh, they answered it, okay. Oh, okay, they answered that one, too. So, you know, it's been really wonderful to see that you really care about what's going on in our neighborhood. And, you know, it's visually pleasing, that's for sure.
It's, I think, going to look a lot better than what's there now.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
More than anything else, but also, we live here, too, we're your residents and your neighbors, and we hope friends. This is what we do all the time for every project, is try to see how it fits into the site the best, and make sure it's a project that the town can be proud of moving forward. For a long time, I mean, this isn't, this building's going to be here a while, the other one's been there a long time. So it's been added on to over the years, but it's been there a while, so thank you for saying that, because we don't always get compliments.
We really appreciate that.
Well, if you go back to January.
We're going to have to find another program to watch.
I will say, it's refreshing, than rather watch it on video.
It's much better in person.
There are difference, everything's so good-looking here. You look so different.
You'll be, you need to watch yourself on TV afterwards, too. Anyway, thank you, and keep watching, because what was all the delivery hours time for you? And as Andy said, Mr. Lern, there's still, just so you know, our engineer was at first skeptical as to whether or not they could actually handle the stormwater on this. But Karen and Pete have worked together on this, and they did a lot of testing for the soils. What you heard to earlier referred to, I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, but that is that DEC doesn't always let fill material function for where stormwater detention would be. Even if the fill material's been there, like, twenty-five years, so that it's settled and can actually absorb it. So they're looking for some guidance on that right now, and it appears that DEC is going that way, because it doesn't make sense to say if something was filled in thirty years ago, that it's not regular soil now. So that's, well, it's true, it's true to me. At some point, you probably filled in lots of places if it's ever been disturbed before, and this area's been highly disturbed, so. But at any rate, please keep watching, and thank you for coming out tonight, expressing your concerns.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak about this application? Coming back up. Ms. Majniewski, Mr. Fearetti, coming back up. So, we need more clarification per Pete from DCDPW before we can conclude seeker? That's what I'm hearing? Liz is nodding.
That's what the email said.
And also, I mean, I know we're.
It's the air conditioning tonight, I can't hear.
I know we're pretty close on the stormwater, but I think that's pretty central. We need to get some more.
So can you guys set up an offline meeting with the engineers?
Certainly.
Preferably soon? Andy?
Would you or anyone from the board like to be present for that meeting?
If I can be, you know, I'll always try to be, even though the topic's above my pay grade, when it comes to stormwater. But I always like to learn, so, yes, if possible, but don't not meet because somebody, I can't be there or anything.
So I assume you have Pete's email address you contacted?
Yes.
And I think Tad should be there, too, because she's the Stormwater Management Officer, the SMO of our town, and it's better to get her concerns in early.
Yes.
As possible, although she follows Pete's lead many cases, but she is independent of him in that case. And then would you like us to adjourn this for two weeks or a month, to give you time to work out whatever needs to be worked out with Pete? A public hearing, I mean, if we get new information from DCDP, sorry, Department of Public Works, then I think we could take, we could have to take a seeker action at a public hearing, in other words.
Right. I'm not confident DPW will get back in two weeks.
Neither am I, that's why I'm saying this, so.
So a month would be appreciated, thanks.
So I believe the next meeting is October fourth?
Second.
October, oops, October second, make it a motion to adjourn this to October second.
So moved second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys. I think you heard nothing but positive comments, even from the neighbors who were concerned, but understand that we've been trying to take their concerns into consideration, and they recognize that the site's going to look better, too. So, great.
Thank you.
See you in a month, if not beforehand, in an offline meeting, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for River Ridge. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The applicants are not here this evening, this is extension of their site plan approval to complete construction for the townhouses. The reason why, again, is because we can't take action, is they're required by our prior extension approval to provide a vellum showing the easement, the trail easement, in more detail. They have not had a chance to do it, but their engineer thinks they can before the next meeting. So I believe we're adjourned this to October second as well, to give them extra time. First, would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? Any comments from the consultants or the board?
No.
There being none, make it a motion to adjourn to October second.
So moved second?
All in favor?
Aye.
That ends public hearings, the next item on the agenda is a workshop for Statsburg storage, some additional units. Welcome back, Mr. Hutchins and Mr. Turner.
Which side should I look at?
Good evening. I think I'm all set.
Over to you.
Okay. What I'd like to do is walk through the changes that have been made to the site plan. One of the first big changes is that we have taken out, there used to be an access driveway. I'm trying to, I should stand here. There was an access driveway that connected the front to the back area. We took that out, because, again, the goal here was try to get the area of disturbance down below an acre. And so that was a major area, and it had a lot of disturbance that was occurring to that rock outcropping, and having to go up at the walls. So that was the first item we dealt with. Second item we dealt with is we reduced the size of building number five. It did get shifted back, and it kind of got shifted up onto a flatter area that exists between the two rock outcroppings. And so it was able to get rid of some of the disturbance that was happening over here. In getting rid of this access drive here, it allowed us to move the buildings closer to the existing building. And then these buildings were actually made a little bit shorter, and so that way, there was less disturbance along the backside of that rock outcrop. And then the last building on the end, rather than being parallel to the other ones, it was turned perpendicular. And so that way, it lessened the impact than that was happening here. Plus, visually, it's now a little less when you're on South Cross Road, because you're seeing the end of it, rather than seeing the side of it. And so it also provided that as well. In doing so, with getting it below the acre of disturbance, from, in my conversation with Mark Graminsky, it pushes us into a different stormwater management guideline. So we didn't have to go with the large retention ponds, and so those were then eliminated from this area. And so it was through those main items there that we're able to pull the area of disturbance down below the acre. And so we feel that presented us with a better site plan. Just to address some of the concerns that you had during the previous meeting, building number five was a big talking point. Because, one, it was very long, it extended very close to Route nine. So the conversation was, can we move it back? Can we do something with it? Can we try to save as much of this rock outcropping as we can? By, as I said, by shortening it down, we were able to pull the front of it back. It's not in line with the existing building, it's about maybe ten feet in front of it. But you'd still be able to maintain your visibility of that building, as well as being able to see the veterinary facility over here. In moving it back and moving it up onto a flatter area, I know there's a landscaping that does occur here. I know you guys were commenting that you really did like the looks of it. It has to go anyways, because we're creating this driveline with a parking area back here, so it did get impacted. But yet, we're able to maintain the slope of the existing rock outcropping, which, in our landscape plan, we are landscaping that with the knockout rows. So we are maintaining kind of a soft look at this point here. We also have clearly identified the access road off of South Cross Road, I should say, access drive off of South Cross Road. That is an emergency egress only, we are providing signage, so that way patrons of the facility don't use that. Plus, there's going to be that gate, which we will get and coordinate with the Roseville Fire Department as to the proper lock that needs to go on it, so that way, they're the only going to, they will be the only ones operating that gate to go in or out as necessary. With the revised site plan, we've gone from seven storage buildings, I should say, seven new storage buildings, down to a total of nine smaller ones. We have the ones here, of course, the one here, and then we located two smaller ones on the backside of the existing building. Those would have smaller storage units, and people using these have a parking area at this location, so they're not having to park in the middle of the driveline, down in this particular area. We are still maintaining our fifty-five parking spaces that we're required to have on the property. Thirty-five we provided through the existing parking spaces here, and then our redesigned parking area in here. And we are going with the deferred parking, is along the eastern edge. We have parallel parking here, there's parking here, that shit is going to be relocated or removed, and then parking over here. And we did locate the storage, the snow storage areas outside of those areas. I know there was a conflict on the other plan, where we did have snow storage in those locations. We were able to locate those outside of that, so there's no conflict and overlap. In regards to. In regards to the lighting of the site, we're still managing it as required by the town code. And what we did is, as requested, we added the existing light fixtures that now occur on the site. We have these, which are on the main building, in the various locations here. They're either wall-mounted, or they have an arm that comes out, so they're adjustable. And then this is the style of lighting that we have provided between building two and building three. Our new lighting is similar to the one we've added with two and three. They don't make that one anymore, so we went with a similar style. And we've located them in just kind of the prime locations, we have them on the ends of each building, so that way the driveline is illuminated, and then inside each one of these alleyways. So the light is pretty much kept confined within the areas where you really need it, so there's not a lot of spillage, or there is no spillage at all anywhere on the site. Landscaping-wise, we're still keeping pretty much with the same landscaping scheme. We're providing two new street trees along Route nine. We are using boxwood to provide some screening of the parking area in the back. And then through the use of ornamental grasses and the knockout roses, which are pretty hardy and low-maintenance. That's how we're softening this area of the site, and using it to screen the parking back in here. On South Cross Road, we're also working with the ornamental grasses and the knockout roses along here. Also, the fence did get shifted back, I know that was a concern, because it was so close to Route nine. So we brought it back closer to the actual parking lot, which, we still tried to maintain an area, so we get our snow storage back into here, where we're not piling snow on top of the plants, that was one thing I wanted to make sure of. In the area on South Cross Road, there are two existing trees that we're going to be maintaining, because they're not going to be affected or impacted by the construction or any earthwork that's being done. And so those are here and here, and so you get a lot of shade here, and I know even when you drive past, it does screen a lot of what's happening on the site. With the changes that we have done, the project's scale did get reduced down by about three hundred and fifty square feet. It's not a big jump, but so we still need to have the special use permit. I would leave it up to any comments or questions.
Before I turn it over to the consultants, I have a question, I've been looking at the plans a lot. Oops. So if I'm going to use one of the buildings back here, and these are banked parking, where do I park?
Typically, what people will do is, you have enough space here that you pull your car in, and you're on one side. It allows for a car to pull up alongside you, if they need to get to their space on the opposite side.
I just want to ensure that there's not any parking in through here.
No, no, there's no parking there, that's where we have all of our deferred parking. We're kind of using a flat area that was created on the side of the road. Right now, it kind of acts as a riprap type of area, it'll be grass, and so any of the water flowing off the site goes through that and kind of filters its way down.
Can you explain what the retaining wall is around here, what the materials are?
Well, there's a retaining wall here.
Right.
And they're looking to use, I'm trying to get the right name of it, it's, it's, it's the large concrete blocks? Yeah, kind of like a.
What do you call it?
Ready rock.
And so they're large rocks, which have a rough-cut front on them, so they kind of look rustic, and you just kind of stack them up.
And it just goes here.
We have it in this area here, and there's a small one over in here.
Is there anything by this building? I thought I saw that there was, there was a.
There used to be a retaining wall in there.
Okay.
But it's not there anymore, because we're no longer disturbing any of this.
I want to make sure that.
Correct.
Thank you. Ms. Axelson, comments?
A few. So I did appreciate some of the modifications, especially getting rid of the road going through, because I got rid of some impervious area.
Sorry, can't hear you.
Oh.
It's air-conditioned.
Okay. So I noticed some of the changes, is that better? And I appreciate the road not going through on the north side of the building. One of the concerns we had last time had to do with the visual aspect as viewed from Route nine, and I'd asked for narrative and some illustrations. Given these changes, I'm wondering whether the board would be satisfied with kind of a section through the site that would illustrate the topography? In other words, here's Route nine's elevation, and you're going through the site, you're seeing a building at this height, rock at this height, buildings, would you see them or not behind, that kind of thing? Just in terms of a cost-effective way to take a snapshot of the effect of the proposed sort of lineup of buildings retaining the bedrock and buildings behind. So I think that would be a good first step in terms of visual.
Each board member can weigh in on whether they want to see that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then, today, in the middle of things, I pulled out some of the old plans, because I kept wondering, well, how are they handling the deferred parking? And I realized that there is some notation on the signed 2016 plan set, that probably we will, at some point in the review, have you put back on these plans, rather than reinvent the wheel. I was taking a look at circulation around the site and parking. Your existing parking is really just twenty-four spaces right now. That's what I was able to count with what's existing. Because I was looking at the very detailed scale calculations, which I want to discuss with Tad, to get clear on what counts towards existing scale. And so my impression is that the deferred parking in the 2016 plans never had to be built, I don't believe.
Correct. We never.
Which kind of makes sense, and I have a feeling the deferred parking. And I have a feeling the deferred parking here may never have to get built. But getting to deferred parking, I was following the limited disturbance line, and it looks like where the, the proposed deferred parking is, you'll need to do something to make the land at the level that it is for most of those spaces. It's not clear for some of the southern deferred spaces on the eastern side whether grading is needed there or not, but those appear to be located outside the limited disturbance. It is more clear the way you've marked the limited disturbance on the engineering plans, so that's very helpful. And...
Can I just comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know I was asking Mark Grominski regarding whether the deferred parking needed to be in or out of the area of disturbance, and he had a conversation with Tad, and you might just follow up with her on this, where she said that they are to be outside, they can be outside of that area, that we didn't have to consider those within.
So, I think we're probably going to disagree with that. That was one of the questions we had to, for right now, we have to approve the plan as if those are being constructed now. We're just not going to require you to construct them. So, everything that you're showing, you have to show us the disturbance for it, any mitigation. So, that was a question that also falls through to the wetland disturbance summary. I wasn't sure if those numbers included all that banked parking as well.
Yeah, and the part of the deferred parking, it looks like there's grading to create it. And in fact, that's an area where there's, maybe you were talking about riprap, and there are pipes coming out at four points along the bank with a, like a riprap, what do you call it? Spillway or whatever.
The pipes discharging?
Yeah.
Outlet protection.
Right, riprap outlet protection. So, that area appears to be proposed for grading, so that would be in the limited disturbance. And again, what Victoria's saying, ultimately, the notation that we had last time, which we've done on other projects, is that within a year that the site is built and in operation, that Tad has the authority per that notation to indicate whether deferred parking must be constructed or how much. So, as Victoria's saying, we have to assume. So, that's important in terms of disturbed area, impervious area. And also, looking at scale, it looks like, and again, very detailed scale calculations, but as far as I can tell, it may be that the scale calculations for what's existing included the deferred parking areas. So, I need to get a little more clarity on that and whether, how, how Tad wants to handle that. So, let's see.
Well, a DEC permit would be required for what the improvements are, so the DEC permit would also have to include parking and show disturbance, I think, for the DEC to get a permit.
I would think so. And some of the notation we'll need to put back on, there were some site construction notes, blanding, turtle impact notes, wetland seed mix, deferred parking note, and bio-retention details. And the other thing, it, we need clarity on whether this thing is rain garden or bio-retention, but just clarity, so it's all the way through. And I would guess that the existing basin that's there, we still need the detail on the plan, because that's still part of the overall site plan, if it has to be enforced in any way. So, we'll get into those details.
Okay, so if it's stuff that I need to put back on, you know, I can easily do that.
I'll, I'll let you know.
Because I was addressing it as though they were existing conditions, so...
This will replace the prior...
Okay.
So, this has to be a complete then on its own set.
Anything else?
For now, that's it. I'll do a detailed review.
Mr. Lern.
I don't want to just ramble on and be carried over.
So, I'm going to beat the dead horse a little bit more about disturbance. Do you know, I understand one of your goals was to reduce the area of disturbance to less than anything. Do you know how much disturbance, what that, what you're at as far as disturbance? I didn't see it noted on the plans.
I, I couldn't find it, but I reached out to, to Mark Grominski. He was out in the field. When I spoke with him, he didn't have the plans in front of him. He said there's a line on...
The line is there.
No, there's a, there's a note on the drawing that states that it's under an acre. And I said, "Well, I can't find it." And so, I'll be reconfirming that with him.
Yeah, I would recommend that we actually, there's a couple of different areas of disturbance, so I would recommend that each area of disturbance be labeled as far as what that actual acreage is.
Okay.
But to that, I was a little, by getting below the acre, you're, you're thinking that you need to be, you don't need the permanent stormwater practice, the bio-retention filter was there before. I'm, I was a little surprised the last time I saw that the DEC was going to allow the, the road to be constructed in the adjacent area. And I see in, in the SWIP that was submitted back in May, that the permit that was submitted for was actually for construction of the bio-retention filter. And it also states that a key, it actually says, a key permitting requirement is that the peak storage, peak discharge from the site cannot be increased. So, we're going to need to see a, an updated hydrologic analysis to verify that, that without that practice, you're not, you know, causing an increase in those peak flow rates. On top of that, I'm, I'm going to be very surprised if the DEC allows an untreated discharge from a new impervious area to the wetland. So, it may be smaller, you know, maybe the bio-retention filter will end up being smaller if you need it. But I think the first step will be to, to see that hydraulic analysis, to see if you need something. You know, maybe it's not a filter anymore, maybe it's just a pond. But if you do, if by constructing that, it puts you over the acre, then you're going to have to be back to a full, to a full SWIP. So, that's, that's, that's pretty much the extent of my comments, is that I think we're still, I think we're still trying to figure out what's happening with this stormwater issue.
You had worked with the DEC before this, right?
Correct. I know Mark had a meeting with him and presented the original plan, which had the retention basins and ponds all along the edge. At that time, he was, he was told that they did approve that, or they accepted that layout. And so, here, we're kind of stepping back even further because we're not doing all these retention ponds. I know he was leaving in the landscaping that they had recommended get planted along the eastern edge. You know, that's still included here in the site. He was going to be making another submission. I'll confirm with him if that had occurred, had occurred to the DEC, so that way they could get a jump on a review of the site.
Thank you. Thanks. Victoria, any comments?
Just looking for clarification again on, you know, what some of these calculations include and don't include.
Which calculations you mean?
Well, the wetlands disturbance, the total disturbance, just with respect to the banked parking issue.
Thank you. Let me start over to my right. Ms. Denafley, comments?
Yes. Basically, three. One, it's a pleasure to see you again, and thank you for reinvesting in our town. Two, I have a great deal of difficulty dealing with two separate sets of plans, and I would greatly appreciate it if they could be incorporated to just one set of plans, like everyone else that comes by us instead of having two. Because also, some of the configurations are set up slightly different. I just want to make sure we don't lose anything along the way. And three, and this may be just me, but I feel for me to make any more comments, one way or the other, a site visit is imperative. To, and not just a site visit, if it, if it's possible to have the new buildings that you're planning on building, putting up, be staked out. So, because this is an...
Spray paint, something on the, where the corners would be, something so...
Well, there's a house there now.
That's true, am I saying?
And the building's...
The house is around here.
Because there are a lot of different buildings, and this is a, I've just been finding this difficult to get a real handle on just by reading the plans. So, if I can see that, and that might be ask and beyond, and my chairman will tell me.
We're waiting to do a site visit because until we heard back from the fire department and the highway department, they weren't sure what their configuration was going to be. And now that we have the new plan, it involves some, this is all very different than what it was before.
Right.
So, I think we can schedule a site visit now, and I'll do that through you, Robert.
Yeah.
And copy Scott.
So, when you, when you talk about the flags, I know offline, there's been discussions about, I think it's Building Five in the front.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
When it comes to something like Building Five, are you looking for the low flags or something taller that will show building height?
Oh, no, no. You know, like, down 99 for...
Where's the edge?
You put around, no, I'm not looking for something major.
I'm certainly okay with doing that, but back where the house is, I, just in respect for the people that are paying to have that space and it is their property, I would prefer not to get involved in doing it there.
Okay.
But I think you can stand at the back of the building and visualize it easy enough. And the other, the ones that are in the area, the front one, and that, I have no issue with, they're, they're fine. We can be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Oliver.
Again, thank you for investing in our town and continuing to grow your business. And thank you for trying to reduce your area of disturbance. I mean, I don't have any more comments, waiting to hear what goes on with the stormwater and how the scale's calculated and all that. But I would be interested to see that, the line of sight with that building move back and how it fits in between those two rock outcroppings. That might be really helpful for myself and the rest of the board. And other than that, I have no other comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Ms. Dexter?
I echo my colleagues in congratulating you on wanting to expand your business. And I'm, and I just want to say thank you so much for taking out that road in between that connected from the front to the back. That really caused me a lot of angst, so I really do appreciate that you listened to us. And it, I kind of like how you're trying to nestle it in between those rock outcropping. Those rock outcroppings are intense, and I, I don't think they're easily removed. So, I think it's in everybody's best interest to just kind of let them hang out by themselves. I guess my two big comments are, on South Cross Road, I happened to be behind a car that was turning in there one day, and I was like, oh, my gosh, to be going east to turn is really hard. So, this looks like it's been designed, so it, it would be almost impossible to turn as you're coming over that little ridge, right? It looks like it's facing east onto South Cross Road, right? So, it's...
It's designed only for fire trucks to exit.
To exit, okay.
Exit only.
Okay. That's actually very helpful. Thank you. And then, I guess my only other, and a site visit will definitely help me with this, the two new buildings that you're adding on the south side of the, no, on the east side of the southern portion there, I guess I'm a little concerned that the, that, because people are going to park right in front of them to unload their stuff. People are not going to park in a parking space to, sometimes it's big and bulky, you're not going to park somewhere else and bring it across. So, I'm just a little bit concerned about, they're going to ignore that, they're going to park right along the easterly side of that. What's that going to do to circulation or say someone's got a, a box truck that they want to bring in and unload stuff or load stuff? So, that's just off the top of my head, my concerns.
That section's very wide. We're obviously going to be labeling it as no parking and whatnot, but it would take a tractor-trailer truck to block a second tractor-trailer truck. Because we used to bring in materials when that was a fabrication center.
Okay.
We had tractor-trailer trucks rounding that corner, 53 footers all the time.
Okay.
So...
And I have been on the site, so I do know, and so for me, the site visit will help to...
And we did a six-week study. We averaged six vehicles passing through that gate a day.
Okay.
So, it's not many.
That's all?
That's it.
Yeah, it's not a high traffic. It's kind of drop it off and leave it there for a couple of years.
The peak was 11.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not that much.
Anyway, thank you very much for the redesign, and it looks like it's, it's turning into a much nicer project.
Thank you. Ms. Wallser?
Hi there. We haven't had the chance to meet yet, newest member of the planning board. So, I appreciate that you heard our comments from the last meeting. I'm a little confused at this point because I just thought I heard my colleague reference that you were not going to touch the outcroppings, but I was pretty sure, I just heard you say before, no matter what, even if regardless of Building Five, you have to remove the outcroppings because of the eight parking spaces and the drive. So, I think from my own clarity, can you tell me if those outcroppings are going to be touched in the landscape area at all?
Sure, sure. The existing landscaping area happens to be just off the edge of the building, so it's right in this area. And so, you can see we're producing a drive that goes around the backside of the building. The big main rock outcropping, it only gets impacted on the backside here, because we're siding the buildings up. And you can see that by where the retaining walls are. You can also pick that up when you look at the grading plan. This rock outcropping, though, the area that's closest to the building, you know, it is being impacted. We're keeping the area that's out here intact, and so that way, for one, it gets, it will be used as a partial shield for the Building Five. But there is going to be, yes, rock removal in this area here.
All right. Thank you, thank you for that clarification. So, I, I really appreciate, you know, increasing the value of your land and, you know, maximizing it. But I, my own personal feeling is that I feel very strongly about the removal of Building Five and not touching that outcropping, and that the site is probably a little overdeveloped to accommodate all the things you want to do and still protect that, that entire landscaped area. And the special use language is very specific about protecting existing topography and view from public roads. So, I'm more than happy to go out and take a site walk to better understand exactly what's going to happen there, but I, I feel pretty strongly about it. I mean, that, that building is 2.5% of the total proposed new development. And I guess I might leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
I like what you've done so far. My only concern right now is Building Five, and what is the street view? What, what would that building, what's it going to look like?
It's going to have a pitched roof. We'll be looking at it from the front.
Okay.
So, it'll be pitched. It won't be slanted as if it, you know, like you see in the back.
Okay.
It'll be the same color as the existing building.
And my only other thought was, right now, you've got the pink double knockout roses that have a planting bed out in front. Notice the board might have input, but to break it up a little bit, maybe a couple of the, like, emerald green arborvitae's right in front to kind of block it a little bit.
That's, they can consider that. Arborvitae is, it's deer like to eat it. And so, you wind up having, like, only arborvitae up top.
They look like candles.
Yes, that's a good description. That's my only concern. I mean, they'll eat the roses too, but knockout roses, just so everyone is aware, are really meant for highway and things like this. They're way low maintenance, and actually, a huge truck, I think it was a W50, ran over one that we had planted, the visual environment committee, and it came back. It split, and it still came back. I mean, those things are like weeds. So, I, I'm okay with it, but the board should consider what they want to see additional...
I just want, maybe to break it up just a little bit.
That's why you have ornamental grasses, though, too.
Things like that being taken out, just something else in there that has some height to it to add to the...
He's looking for, he's looking to buffer the view.
Right.
Height, some height to it.
Something with height.
Got you.
And actually, this kind of gets back to my question that I need feedback on, so after Ann's done, I want to go back to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, I as well appreciate your effort to move Building Five back, and I, but I do think a site visit will help me have a better understanding of what the impact really will be from Route Nine. Thanks.
Now, none of us weighed in on, or no one weighed in on Liz's suggestion for a site view, a site analysis?
Yeah, that would be good, too.
Yes.
I concur. That would be good.
You mean a cut?
Yes.
An elevation cut?
Can I, can I just clarify quickly? Last time, I'd asked for narrative and illustrations of before and after views of the site from Route Nine relative to the proposed changes in topography related to rock removal and the proposed storage buildings. And the idea there was, there was so much going on there that we really needed something kind of akin to photo simulation rendering, something a little more graphic, a little more, you know, picturesque, I guess you could say. Because of the recent project changes, my question to you tonight is, they didn't, they didn't provide that, and the res... didn't provide that, and the response was, we'll provide that at a later date, wanting to hear, I believe, the board's reaction to these changes. Right.
Because that type of thing is, it's quite expensive to pull all of the stuff together, so.
It is, which is why, what I was proposing at the beginning was to re, sort of word that to say, provide narrative and a line of sight, which is, it's a graphic illustration, a profile, thank you. Thank you, that's a better word, instead of illustrations before and after, so, because of the expense and because project changes have been made to try to address. So that's my question, if a profile would suffice for the planning board to examine the potential visual, some narrative.
For those who are present at the, I'll just go ahead and throw it out there, we had had a couple of offline meetings with project sponsors for a new hotel at the Culinary Institute of America, and they came in with the same kind of side profiles to show us in each case what the building would look like in terms of if you were staring at it from the side. And this was primarily, sight lines, primarily to show what the impacts from the river would be. But also, it was, it was very helpful to me, because I had not realized that the parking, they're proposing underground parking, the parking is actually not even visible. I thought that there was, the way it looked first, just looking at the elevation, I thought that you were going to see some of the parking area down below, but no, it's actually not at all visible, and I saw that from the site, from the profile, so I think that's also be helpful. My, I have a quick comment, which is, well, first, every time I go by, I see people weeding over there. You do a really great job of maintaining your landscaping, thank you. Speaking as a resident of the town. And the mulch is, the mulch is, thank you.
Much nicer.
I also think a site visit would help, and I noticed that some, I know you were, is it Penske, Penske truck? You can rent them, and I see sometimes there's one there, sometimes there's not. Can you just show, is there a defined place for where the Penske trucks would be, or are these just like, do people return them to you? How does that business work?
The contract's been terminated.
Whoa, there you go. Okay.
He says almost smiling.
I'm guessing that means it didn't work out.
Story there.
So, yeah, you don't have to show that, so.
Okay.
Really, I also would like to see an easier way to read between the two sets of maps, like combining them.
And making them the same orientation, because you have to turn one to compare it.
Right. Right.
That's way above our pay grade. The one, the one reason why we put it one way is because we're trying to get on a smaller sheet of paper, and I know Mike likes to use a larger sized sheet of paper, so I'm kind of fighting between the two.
We much appreciate the smaller sheets.
We can end up by doing the larger sheet and.
No, no.
The same way.
He can do the smaller. I'd rather have the smaller sheets personally. They're easier for me to see, because you, you have each one more detailed.
Right.
But yeah, the orientation is tough to try to read to go through everything, so.
Plus the engineering.
Put them on the table. Yeah.
The engineering sheets kind of have two sheets in one, kind of?
They do.
Yeah. So maybe I can have them break those up.
Exactly.
Up to two different borders.
On a smaller sheet of paper.
Because they, there are, there's literally two sheets, like, per, per big drawing.
I get it, but.
And otherwise, I have no other comments. What I mostly heard tonight was, combine plans, everyone seems to want a site visit, we would like to see building five somehow marked or delineated where it would be. You're not looking for tall flags, just something that we can get an idea perspective, that'll also give us a better idea of how much rock is going to be removed. You heard Stephanie say that, that she feels strongly that building five should not be proposed, because it's, you're removing a natural resource such as a rock outcrop. And I have to say, I had Ann's concerns, as I wrote down in my plans, I thought that this was, looked, sorry, a little dangerous right there, too. I now recall going back that this is extra wide, I didn't look at it in terms of scale, but is there a way, can you propose, is it wide enough to have some parking in front of the building, or is that just a bad idea?
I was going to suggest some directional signage, so when traffic comes around, that they be directed to the wider two-way access point on the south side of the building, so they could get around to the other units. And, and to leave the rows, the row between those two buildings so that people can pull in and unload their stuff, because that's what people do at storage units, they just, I, I would, why would you?
Yeah.
Park and then have to walk a hundred feet to unload your stuff? It makes no sense. Most people are doing that, they're unloading their stuff, they might park their car before they lock up, but.
I, I mean, if the average is truly six per day, I'm less worried now than I was before, is what I want to say straight out, I just didn't get to finish my statement, but I do think that, I mean, people are lazy, let me rephrase that, people are looking for the path of least resistance, not lazy. So if you've got a carload, you want to just open it, and it would be, I would be inclined to just say, I'm pulling over here and doing it real fast and leaving. Again, if there's only six cars per day, you could get away with it. And I know you have a manager on site, too, who could say, nope, you can't park there if they were paying attention, so there are ways to mitigate this as well. That make any sense what I just said?
No, it did. No, because literally, when, when you're there, I think building and unloading might take five, 10 minutes at most, and then you're off.
Well, to Bob's point also, these aren't fifteen by twenty-five.
No, these are small ones, I, I got that.
You don't, you can't be there for a long time, there's not much stuff.
What size are these units, dimensionally? Do you know?
I think they've designed right now, they're deeper, like, five by tens.
That's what I thought, so they're, they're narrow and then deeper, that's what I thought.
They're single cars.
Yeah. So you could, it's, it's ten feet deep, you could unload some stuff for a while, yeah. It's just, I want to make sure that this area is safe, particularly since, remember, this is not a way in for the fire department. Fire trucks coming from Statsburg, as well as from, across from the high school, would come down here and enter and then go through this way, so I just want to make sure that this is never blocked for emergency vehicles. Again, the site walk will tell us, if you can maybe draw something to show us where the outer line is of that building.
Or even just put a, a piece of paint or something at the corner, right, at the far east, southeast corner, because that would show you how far it comes out and how far away from the building.
I agree. I agree.
So.
Yes.
I was just going to say, the plans do have discrepancies between them as well, which need to be cleared up, because one sheet of these plans does show a new retaining wall around the whole building.
I thought I saw it.
Yeah, it's on.
Probably just didn't get taken off.
Well, right, but I mean.
Karen has the advantage of one plan.
But I knew it.
When we go to look, we're looking at them and they don't match.
I saw a retaining wall right over here.
If PZ 102 shows a retaining wall around the whole building, and so.
Not the whole building, but from here.
All the way up to that first cutout.
All the way to here and then down.
Right, right.
But I know, I know, I know things just don't get taken off, but.
That's my mistake, no, that's on our drawing, that's supposed to have been taken off.
And, and actually, I, just as a follow-up to that, I think it would probably be a good idea after we do our review comments to have some offline consultation, to kind of get into the nitty gritty.
Sure. Once you finish your review, more detailed review, is that what you said? We can set up an offline meeting?
Have a good idea.
I think that any time that we can accomplish things offline, when it's technical stuff, it's better. Because a lot of these, as you said, are their technical details. And Andy, I'm still getting your idea, you think the DEC is not going to allow this? Is that it? Or, because it's untreated?
Because it's a DEC wetland, I think that they're going to want to see some kind of treatment for that new impervious surface before it enters the wetland. That's just my experience, that's generally what they want to see.
And you said Mr. Graminsky's trying to meet with the DEC right now?
I know he was, he was going to be sending them the site plan for review. I don't know if he was going to be setting up another meeting with them, or it'd be a phone conversation, but he was going to be having some type of communications with them.
So, before we set a public hearing, we need to have some way to have one single set of sheets, so the public can view them as well, and I think it would be instrumental for us to have the site walk sooner rather than later.
Before the public hearing.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I don't believe we're ready to set.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just saying, I'm looking forward toward the future, I want to make sure we have, once we get some of these other issues lined up, we still have your review memo, both, from both engineering and planning, to see if there's what other changes might need to be made to the plans, but also the site visit may allay some people's fears, it may confirm their fears, and so I'd like to have that done, too, so we can give better input about any changes that need to be made. And it sounds like we may just have to go ahead and notice this as a public hearing, if it's going to be all seven of us at one time, or more than.
You mean the site walk?
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, you're welcome to have a site visit with all seven members, that's not an issue.
No, but I mean, if people want to discuss, and I think this might be one where people want to discuss it.
So you'd have to ask the applicant if he's willing to have an open meeting at his property, because he would have to allow the members of the public to come and observe as well?
Since we, would it be acceptable for you if we had, we notified, because otherwise we can't talk amongst ourselves about anything we see, because it's not a public hearing. Now, we didn't have any member of the public speak at all, ever.
It wouldn't be a hearing, it would just be an open meeting.
I mean, public, an open meeting, I should say, so people, in other words, could come and observe us, et cetera, that's really all that we're talking about.
I, I, again, I have no problem with any of it, except just with respect to.
To be sensitive, I think we can do that. I didn't even know there were people still living back there.
Oh, yeah.
Boy, you drive fun. So I'll send out maybe a doodle poll for, for a site visit to everybody?
Yeah.
Do the consultants want to go with us on the site visit? Yea or nay?
If you're having an open meeting, yes.
On a Saturday?
Or a Sunday, or even a weekday after work.
A weekday after five.
Still late, it's still live.
It's still light right now, it's still light right now, so I'll just send out some dates, I'll just send out some dates.
Doesn't matter to you?
Good days, bad days.
During the week is probably better for me, just as we get into it, I've got kids in college, I'm going to be traveling, I would prefer to be there. No problem.
Absolutely. So.
I'll send out some dates and times. Well, the time will always be, what, 5:30?
Yeah.
To allow everybody to get home, to be off work? Yes?
Say again?
Is 5:30 a good time to meet for a site visit?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then I'll send out some dates.
Yeah, just do it soon, though.
I will do a doodle poll, I, I probably can't get to it till Friday, but I'll do, I'll set up a doodle poll on Friday and send it out to everybody.
Thank you.
And I'll include you two on it as well, so you can weigh in, in case there's not a time that works for you guys. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
I, I just want to remind, I know that some of us have met prior, and, and, you know, this has been going on for a while, but I just want to remind everybody, building five is the most important building in this thing. It is a marketing piece, we have, every month, we have people coming and going, we didn't even know you existed. Our building does not look like self-storage, all of the traditional drive-up self-storage buildings are behind and not visible from the road. This provides us with the very necessary marketing that we're looking for. So, you know, pushing it back to where it is is not an issue whatsoever, but having it visible from Route nine, not totally buffered and covered, is critically important to this project plan, to the owner.
And by the way, this is, this projects 10 feet out from this?
No, it's, it's about equal to the door, entrance door to the office, so it's two or three feet off.
I thought it was like three feet.
That, much further back from the front of the building.
Okay. Originally, if you recall, there were two buildings.
Yeah, it was at that part.
It was lined up with this, and now it's, I, I think I said, I'm looking at the line, it looks like it's like maybe two or three feet, so that's my thought.
Right about at the doorway going into the office.
Okay. And reminder, I'll talk a tad, too, but I think that this has to be considered an area of disturbance, so you want to make, might want to take a look at that again about trying to standard the acre, because if this is constructed at some point, then it would have to be disturbed, unless I'm really wrong, I don't think it's ready to receive pavement and parking yet. And like I said, I'm pretty sure the DEC, in granting a permit, would require that you show what the disturbance would be in that area, because once you get the permit, your permit's good. So in other words, it would be good for changing the parking, too, so I think that that's going to be required by DEC. I feel certain of it, and Andy's nodding, too, so. Anyway, I'll set up the doodle poll, we'll be back in touch. Thank you.
And then, once you get a new set of plans, which I think you're going to wait until you get Liz and Andy's comments on, we'll circulate and start that process.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep. So thanks again, gentlemen. Okay, we'll see you shortly.
Thank you.
And there is no other business tonight, so I get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.